We're going to call the troop commander. We'll see if you can use number one board reading order. You will call please commander.
Jeff Anderson.
Here.
Danae Carter. Tommy Allen.
Here.
Mike Harland. Cindy Fong. Here. Steve Rogers.
Here.
And now.
I would like to be interested in applying to the United States of America and to recall that we are formally standing on the nation under that individual. That's for all.
Welcome, everybody. It is so nice to have people here to talk about how well our students are doing in various activities and various things. And thank you all for coming. And we really, we really appreciate that. And as I say, it's nice to recognize how well our students doing other things. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Spencer. I'll let everybody over there.
Appreciate. Well, it is a little crowded, so we'll try to move along as much as possible. But we do have some, some people we'd like to recognize today. And as Mr. Miller said, it's also, it's always very exciting when we get this many people in for good things, right? And to honor and to show how well our students are doing. Just a quick one, though. We do have some special guests. Our troop four sixty-six who are under the scoutmaster Kevin Bach are here tonight. So we appreciate them coming and they're just here to observe. So welcome to them. So let me give them a nice round of applause. So welcome them. And then I'm going to turn it over now to Mr. Stafford, our high school principal. He is here to present our ILMEA All-State Choir selection and our Illinois State Scholars. And he's grabbing that during the group. And just so you know, we've given them permission. Once they get out of here, once they do this, they get to get out. They have practice tonight. The three, the three high schools do, they have practice for the musical coming up. So a little plug for the musical coming up here in March. So make sure you get to get out there and see that one of the two weekends. Mr. Stafford, welcome everybody. Last weekend, we had some students participate in the ILMEA competition. I will turn it over to Mr. Michael Kren, our choir director, some of the more established ones and like last weekend.
This year, we had a really cool opportunity that we have an audition choir and an unauditioned choir. That audition choir was required to audition for ILMEA. They did that back in October, actually, and it's a one and done. They auditioned one time, they practiced a bunch before it and do this one thing, and they don't even sing a full song. They just sing like ten to twenty measures of a song and then a couple other requirements. And that one audition helps them to make it to what's called a district. So the district festival is kind of our regional or our sectional of type. And that, at that place, they would be with the Chicagoland area. So we're a little different because it's not IESA and things in our conference. We're competing in a different area. Our area is actually schools like Downers Grove South, Hinsdale, Lyons Township, and schools that are kind of in that more Chicagoland area. We're on the bottom like boot of it. So we're the one of the smallest schools probably in that district along with like Reed Custer and Morris. So it's really challenging to make it into this district festival alone. After the district festival, the same audition gets us into the state festival. So that's why we're here to celebrate these guys is because they were able to go to the state festival last weekend. What that consisted of for the high scores was that on Thursday, they rehearsed from, we left here at six AM. They rehearsed from eight AM till like noon, had a lunch, and then went right back to rehearsing. So it was like a seven hour day. And then the next day, they did five hours of rehearsing. And then on Saturday, they did a little dress rehearsal and then had a performance. So they're not competing down there. They're just practicing with, the director was Brian Winnie, who's a professor at one of the colleges in Illinois. And so they get to be with this really awesome director and learn more about how to be a better singer. And so they got to do that and participate with all of the really great people. And Mackenzie as well got to go as a bassoonist. So she had many people that auditioned as well in the same exact district, even though she's a bassoonist, same thing as the choir. Jackson was actually available to be a part of the inaugural junior high all-state choir that they did. This is the first year that they've allowed junior hires to come down to state. They've had the district level for quite a while, but now he was able to come down and be a part of that junior high state. He did a little bit of more of a short, he hit Friday and Saturday, but it was really awesome to have all of them come on down with us and really start to make this ILMEA state a thing for our students.
Now, I remember that Jackson was doing something else in the past.
Yes, yes. And so Jackson also, I sent out the IHSA National Anthem. They can audition to sing for different state like volleyball games, basketball games as they come up. And Jackson actually will be singing at the eighth grade state volleyball game in that March twenty-first, which is going to be really awesome as well.
Oh, wow.
So awesome, awesome accomplishments for all of us.
Oh, kids, congratulations. What a great honor that is. I mean, we just want to applaud you and congratulate you on the work that you do. And keep up the good work. And, you know, what a great honor, what a great honor. And thank you for representing all students from there. Thank you.
Congratulations and really well, it's a great point. Great job of that. And all these students are involved in multiple things. To be involved with all those things is still, they're pretty good students too. So what an awesome, awesome accomplishment. And representing our district just makes, it makes me very proud and I know those appearances as well. So thank you guys very much. Like I said, get out here. Um, to Mr. Stafford again, we're just excited to get out and then with our Illinois State Scholars.
While these guys head out, all of the high school students that are being recognized, come on in. So Illinois State Scholar Program is a statewide program that has been in existence for as long as I've been in schools. And I regard it to be one of the highest recognitions, highest achievements academically that a high school senior can achieve. How you get to the point of being an Illinois State Scholar is a mix of standardized testing achievement via the ACT or SAT, in addition to outstanding academic achievement at the high school in the form of a grade point average and class rank. Again, like Mr. Spencer said a couple minutes ago, these students are not just involved in academics. They are athletes. They're involved in clubs and activities. They hold part-time jobs. This is a culmination of a ton of hard work that also is an entire student in terms of what they do and what they offer to the high school. So I have no doubt that not only is this success here, but also success in the future, no matter what they decide to do. This class has twenty-one recipients of the Illinois State Scholar recognition, which is, it's amazing for a school our size. Again, some of them are, you know, doing other things tonight. Some of them are at the high school with practice and games and other things like that. But I do want to read all twenty-one names so that even though we're not here, everybody does have an opportunity to be recognized because again, it is such a significant academic achievement. These twenty-one seniors again are this year's group. Eliana Allen, Anthony Alts, Rita Barclay, August Burns, Ailey Castle, Heidi Cheever, Mackenzie Proxton, Lily Feisley, Peyton Gibson, Will Jonkey, Melody Kinder, Deborah Lynch, Ava Meyer, Mason Natchak, Hunter Nettles, Trevor Perrino, Sean Valerik, Owen Orros, Molly Ramston, Mason Wontrowa, and Dylan Young. Again, congratulations.
Young students, congratulations. You know, we recognize athletics and we recognize fine arts. It's nice to recognize the academic part of it. Mr. Stafford, I will tell you, Illinois State Scholars go way back because I can remember. So it's got to be a long time. It's got to be a long time. You know, we are so pleased, again, to recognize you and that you represent the Coal City Committee Unit District Number One. Thank you and congratulations on a great job. Keep up the good work, please.
Up to it. Number one is a great number for a class. I think it's most packed in quite a few years out of one class. And it is a select few. And it's a hard-earned thing. And these kids right here can tell you, I'm sorry to call you kids these young adults because I hope they are. But I remember back in their elementary school, really talented. Been fortunate enough to be around that long. But best luck to you. And there'll be a lot of great things come out of this group here along with others, but we'll see what they do. I'll get them back to the Coal City a little bit and say hi to us when they graduate. So best luck to you. Congratulations. So we do have one more group to get recognized. It's always a fun one. That's how you're able to get into it. And we have our local principal, Mr. Stone here. I'm going to slip over him. I'll let Patty let the students continue to do this over the years. But we also have Commander Jim Phelps. I guess we have VFW thirteen thirty-six here to, to give out the Patriot Pen Awards. But I'm going to go and turn it over to Mr. Hitchcock and let you kind of talk about it.
Yeah, the Patriots Pen Program started about seven years ago. They've had over a thousand essays. And it's all based on citizenship and patriotism, everything. The great program the VFW offers and skill that goes into our students. Commander Hop, he's, he's done an awesome job. He's provided the opportunity. He has more to say. I don't want to take his thunder. He has more to say about the papers.
Well, my first, I'd like to thank all the students to participate in this new Patriot Pen Program. It was obviously a great deal of thought that went into each and every essay that was written. There was only a small number can be forwarded onto the district level. Choosing those few was known as a task for the Hitchcock Committee. And if it wasn't for this gentleman and his committee, we wouldn't have. Because us VFW members are too old to go through a hundred and fifty-eight essays and make any sense out of them. So they do the hard work. We just reap the benefits. As Mr. Hitchcock calls out your name, please step forward and receive your certificate and an award. And then line up in front of that table over there so that we can get a group shot at the end, if you would please. All right. So if you come this way, we're going to get a picture of famous Bondo man. And so anything, glue, come on down. This is five years of making, finally getting this type of picture. So.
Smile. Awesome. Casey, good job. That tech paper is this year. And then it's Naya Tasso. Patrick Dorcler.
Brooklyn, Reese. Ava Paul. Logan Marshall. Did you make it? Landon Farrar. Olivia Renn. And Aubrey Blay.
Guess we're going to give a group picture? Is that? Barrett, if you want to get there, we're going to take something up here and get that straight up here.
If your friend, you're it.
Don't be smart, Bill. No. Thank you. While we're waiting for Hop, this program is a really big one. It's the right right. So this order, this staff is going to be. You're not getting away yet. These students here were the top ten out of a hundred and fifty-eight essays that were written at the middle school. The VFW post is allowed to send one to the district level for every fifteen essays written. This is the third or fourth year in a row that Coal City has sent the most essays to the district, far outnumbering much larger communities like Joliet, New Lennox, Blackport. It's just to name a few. It's all due to Mr. Hitchcock volunteering to lead the project. It most likely would not have, not have happened if it wasn't the pleasure working with him on this project. At this time, the students may return to their seats, which you did. Her essay not only rose to the top of the Coal City population, but also was selected to progress onto the state level. Her essay was selected out of three hundred and seventy-seven essays written within the district. She placed number one. At this time, I would like to present her with a little extra award. Spend that wherever you want. Okay? Would you like to read your essay?
I wish I was a good writer and read it, but I sure can't. It's very well. I've read it, but I sure can't read it like this. Sure you can. Very good. Congratulations.
Good luck at state too.
This is Sobiak here today. She got caught in a sleep storm up north. But she's her teacher. She's also an ELA teacher. So she helps tremendously with writing the papers. And her student, her associate students in the Illinois. Wanted this award. So good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Well, yeah, first of all, thank you. And his organization for doing this. Thank you, Jim, for all the work he does with this. And as an old, I appreciate the old district teacher. I can appreciate what these kids have done. And it's just, it is just wonderful that you do this and then to do this in a, you know, in a great way. And we are so thankful to be able to recognize those kids for that. It's another great accomplishment that our kids do. And I love being able to recognize them in the board meetings because you guys are outstanding. Keep up the good work, please. Please, please.
Absolutely. Again, thanks to VFW and everyone part of that, Mr. Hitchcock for sponsoring it. And, and I, you know, the other teachers in the seventh grade that are involved in it. And again, congratulations to students. It's a lot. It's a, you know, again, a little cross-curricular stuff, which is great. We love to see that. And like I said, every year we had a lot of students that participated and do well in the competition. So it says a lot about how hard they work and how hard our teachers do. So congratulations to everybody.
I would like to thank the school board and the superintendents. I think we're headed for your school to do a presentation with Mr., what's his name?
Sinclair.
Sinclair. Yeah, okay. When is that? When? It's coming up, right?
February third or something like that, February ninth.
And then in April, I think I've got a holding, a flag holding thing for Tracy Carlson. So you guys are always welcoming us into your schools and we can pass on a little patriotism to these students. And I'll tell you what, there's probably a future Mr. or Madam President in this group. Good luck at state. Good luck at state.
We have to stay in the group.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody, for coming. It's so nice to be able to recognize our kids for various initiatives, and just, we have a great turnout for everybody. Okay, let's continue on with what we're doing, are there any additions? Anything in general at that time, sir?
Yes, I have some other matter.
Would you, would you stand, please, and give us your name and where do you live in this?
Michael Crandall, I'm twenty-five, I live in Diamond. My wife, she wanted to be here, she's, first of all, she's Secretary of the Underboard. Very close to here, so she had to be there for months. I own some properties in Coal City, and I'm my parents, born and raised from town. I'm here today to talk about an incident, I want to ask for help from the board. On Monday, Mr. Michael Crandall called my wife and said my grandson Liam could not go on the March twenty-second to twenty-seventh trip to Disney. My grandson Liam attends High Road School in Custer Park. My older son is Nicholas, a junior in high school. I was at work when this all started, I was contacted by my wife, she was upset. She told me Mr. Crandall called her and that Liam could not go on the trip. That she could drive to Florida, to Disney, at the last second. This trip was planned in twenty-twenty-three with Hope County, I know she's no longer here. She originally planned the trip in twenty-twenty-three, we jumped on board back in twenty-twenty-three. And we just found out Monday, now they're saying we can't go, so. I didn't sleep since Monday, I've had a couple hours sleep here and there, so I've been upset, I've been emotional. I started calling school on Monday, asking to talk to somebody. Was told there's meetings, nobody can talk to them, told there's meetings, nobody can talk to them, they were none for a while. Mr. Spencer was in meetings, I asked, I called again, I said, well, who's next in line? I'm done with, there's got to be somebody, they gave me Mr. Spencer. He was in meetings the first two. After a couple calls, and no call back, I called again and again. I was given Jason Smith to talk, the same thing, it was, I had to call, I got a call back, was told he would call me. When he didn't call me, he had no information on any of the of this, he didn't know anything about it. He said he would look into it, I asked him one thing, find out who told Mr. Crandall that my child could not go. I wanted to know who fired the shot, who made the decision, that's all I asked. He said he would find out. I what, I waited a couple hours and then called back, had no answers. I requested several others to give me a call, so I could find out who made the decision. And to allow my, who was saying that my son could not go on the trip. Went to work and got a call from Mr. Stafford, he told me he didn't know anything about it. That Mr. Spencer, and this was recorded, I worked at the nuclear power plant, I didn't do this on purpose, but this was recorded, this conversation was recorded. Mr. Stafford told me he had nothing to do with it, no part of the decision, and didn't have anything to do with any of it. That story's going to change, unfortunately, that's another reason why I'm so upset. I was not, never contacted to receive a call from Mr. Michael Crandall, who I saw tonight. But he was supposed to be with Mr. Stafford, and he called Mr. Stafford. When Mr. Stafford called me, he supposedly was with him. So the conversation I had was in front of Mr. Crandall, they were supposedly in a room together when he called him. But he said, like I said, he didn't have any, he didn't make a decision, and he said he didn't have any, he didn't need any, pointed him, he didn't know anything about it. So, basically, I was getting run around. Mr. Smith called me back later, but still didn't have an answer on who fired the shot, who made the decision. I just asked, basically, that's what I wanted to know, I'm like, I was rude, I'm tired, spent a long week. I said some things, I swore, I was angry. I just, I knew I was getting run around. People are in meetings, I get it, I know people are busy, I'm very busy too, I work at the power plant, I'm a retired laborer, I spent almost thirty years in construction. I retired, and then I went to a new plant, and now I'm on again. After several more phone calls. It was filed, I think today, whenever, I'm told that there's a policy, there's a policy that another child can't go on a bus trip. But I kept asking, show me the policy, where's the policy, I want to see this policy. And every time I'd say that, then they'd back up, well, we're not sure. I said, well, we were told a child could go, family or friends could go on this trip. Bob Rogers is the name of the company, Bob Rogers Travel. They use extra space, they said people often go on these trips, family and friends, and the school trips. This isn't a school bus, this is a Bob Rogers charter bus. I get it, that's a school trip, so it's school rules, I understand that. And then obviously, some policies filed. Hope County was the original planner of this trip. She, if you didn't go at the original meeting back in twenty-twenty-three, there was a video, I have the video. And she says, plain as day, family and friends are welcome to attend, they can go with the trip, they can do part of the trip, they can, they can be involved. You can ride the train, you can, you can, if there's room, if there's space, you can get on the bus, ride there and maybe fly back, depending on what you wanted to do personally. So everybody was supposedly invited, if there was room. She did mention that there could be past policies, but she didn't think there was any policy that would stop that from occurring. That's what she says in this video. I've made Mr. Smith aware of the video. The, I'm upset, Mr. Stafford told me he didn't have anything to do with it. Didn't have anything to do with it, that is a recorded conversation, he said he didn't have anything to do with the conversation or the decision. Then later today, talking to Mr. Smith, he tells me that he's gone up to chain the man, and if Mr. Spencer made any decision, tell him back, Mr. Stafford, tell him Michael Crandall to call my wife. That was the order of the, basically, the firing line. Supposedly, Mr. Spencer made the decision and told Mr. Stafford, and then Mr. Stafford told Mr. Crandall. But that's not what Mr. Stafford told me when I spoke with him, which is a recorded conversation. I know I've only got five minutes, I scribbled those much down as I could. I was at work, I had to deep work, the company didn't do this, I haven't worked, just worked in ten years. All right, I haven't slept much of this since Sunday night, so I apologize for being, if I make mistakes, I did not know about this meeting until this afternoon, then I had to be at three, scribbled down some chronological notes really fast, and here we are. I need to know about this policy, is it real, is it written, is it border-proof, why did this go for so long, if it is a law? This started in twenty-twenty-three, and a month prior to the trip, it gets taken away from my son. By the way, this is a surprise Christmas present, and where do we go from here, I was lured in by Coal City administrators, that needs addressing. Compensation needs addressing. I spoke with Bob Rogers. They're like, you've got insurance, but this doesn't fit the insurance, you don't want to cancel, you're not canceling, you don't have anything going on, you want to go. They felt the same, that Coal City's going to have to pay for this, so, I don't know if I got to get an attorney, I don't know where we're going to go from here. I also feel like this could possibly be a case of discrimination against my son, because he's special needs, and Mr. Spencer and him have not gotten along with years, and I don't feel like he should be in charge of or have anything to do with my son.
All right, well, thank you very much, we will, Mr. Spencer will be contacting you as far as he's concerned. Thank you for coming and addressing the board. Anybody else, any other people that wish to speak? Okay, hearing done, then we will continue on with our meeting. Board members, are there items that the board would like removed from the consent agenda? Hearing done, now I will entertain a first and second motion to approve the consent agenda, including amendments and closed session minutes from the regular meeting of January eighth. The board study session of the whole, January twenty-ninth, the December activity funds reports, December treasurers report, January monthly checks manual, checks report, the January payrolls, February accounts payable. Personnel items, including approval of resignations, employments, employee transfers, leave requests, move closed session minutes to open session, and to approve the following building use request, adds listed. Sean so moves and Dan seconds, roll call please, the other?
Tom Milton.
Yes.
Yes. Thirty-five, yes, Steve Roden.
Yes.
Yes. Any questions about the administrative report, board member, any questions about those? Everybody okay with those?
Yes.
Okay, Luke, let's go with you, anything you want to add?
Nothing to add, but I'd rather answer any question.
Okay, any student service questions for Luke, we go to those? Okay, Jen?
Nothing to add, same.
We're good with yours then, too? Any questions we need to have of Jen? Another report. Okay, hearing done, then, Spencer, let's open it up to you.
Yeah, thank you, so my superintendent for, you see there, just a student who's a Joliet Junior College student, who'd like to do some fieldwork at our early childhood center, excuse me, working with our preschool teachers. We have a forward request, a couple forward requests that Mr. Smith has taken care of. But also, number three there, it's always nice to honor our own people, just wanted to take a minute and congratulate board member Sean Hamilton for attaining the level of distinguished annual merit from the IASB. And so that includes just a lot of the work that you guys do, and filling out, or going to some of the meetings and that, so he has that. If anybody else received that, please let us know, unfortunately, they don't send it to me, so I don't know until I know, but congratulations to Mr. Hamilton.
Yeah, so sometimes it's a matter of, you know, I take the opportunity to represent us at various meetings and whatnot, so this is a shared recognition.
Congratulations. Along with that, kind of along the same line, we do have an IASB Three Rivers Division meeting coming up on Tuesday, March fourth, from five-thirty to eight. I talked about this a little bit last, last week, it is being held at the Manhattan Junior High, it's newly constructed, just opened this year, they've actually got ongoing construction there. But if you're interested, let us know, let wander, I know, if you're interested in going, and we can set something up, and I'll do my best to do it, but if you let us know, we can get you, get you signed up for that. And then, next thing I have is a board review hearing, so there was a board of review hearing held last week. It was done virtually in regards to the G Hitachi Morris operations, spent your fuel plant. During that, they did it virtually, during that meeting, Chairman Arma Robb explained to the board that the board review had decided to put the valuation of the G Hitachi plants on hold, pending a final decision with the PTAG. And from legal, Stu Witt let us know, he said he pretty much said, kick the can down the road until we receive a PTAG decision. So with that, we don't expect there to be any change in the value of G Hitachi. We imagine it'll probably be the six point one million that it's been for the last four years, but we'll wait to hear that official word from the board review here soon. And then from there, we'll make the suggestion, if we need to, to go to PTAG, we did have a meeting today with the other taxing bodies, with Stu, and kind of went through some different options, with more to come, more to come on that. But just wanted to give the board an update on where we're at with that, but again, we expect that, so.
That's frustrating, but thank you.
Yes, yes, it is.
It'd be nice to get that closed and get up to where it should be.
And just remind everybody that our numbers and our people evaluate, I think it's around two hundred and nineteen million, not six point one, so it's a big difference. We'd like to get to the table if we could with G Hitachi and stuff, I assume, and see if we can work something out, so, so more to come on that, and I'll try to do my best to keep the board.
Thank you for your work on that, that's, that's an important part of what we do.
A lot of, Casey does a lot of work with that, too, so I appreciate it.
Thanks, Jay.
Parentship conferences are this Thursday, so tomorrow night, from four to eight. We have Family Wellness Night coming up, the nineteenth of February, it's a Wednesday at the high school, from six to eight, that's something that's been going on for close to ten, ten years, I believe. That'll be at the high school, we have my next coffee with the superintendent is Friday, February twenty-first, at nine AM here at the board office, everyone's welcome to attend that. Shortly after that, they have the Fine Arts Festival, Sunday, the twenty-third, from one to four, Pirmont High School, that's always a great time, a lot, good to see our students, mainly our middle school and high school students, and the artwork, and the musical, and the talents that they have, so everybody's welcome to attend that, stop in for a few minutes if you'd like. Family Reading Night is Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, so you can see a lot of things going on in February for a short month, but we're rolling on, so those are some things, and then from there, be glad to entertain any questions if the board has any.
Anybody have any questions, board members? Okay, thank you, Mr. Spencer, Dan, anything from the vocational center?
Just what's there.
Just what's there, okay, thank you. Any questions about the athletic director's report?
Yeah, I just, I have a question, just curious. The guideline, Jeff, Jeff, you may know, true, Jeff, you've been on, the athletic guy, is there like once a year where there's a group that gets together and review the guidelines, does that sound right?
Yes, yep.
Is that right, is that, when does that happen, do you know?
It's usually in the spring, I believe.
Yes.
It's usually in the spring.
Okay, so is that, but it's annually?
Yes, annually, and then all the coaches come with the athletic directors, and you kind of sit down.
Is your parents, I've got some recent questions about some of the stuff in the guidelines, so I want to be, I just don't recall, but I saw that, is, like, parents sometimes invited to that?
They never were invited before, but not saying that they couldn't be.
Yeah, just to ask, I've never been, because I know you've represented, and they had to represent it before, so, okay, so that comes up in the springtime?
Yes, it is springtime, I know that Mr. or Athletic Director Mr. Brayz, he does have a parent committee that he meets with, I think, monthly, something he started, I believe, this year.
Okay.
And it's not with all seen that, but he's just a way to keep parents involved, so that may be.
Yeah, I can talk about it offline, it's just, it's off the top of my head when I saw that, because I, like I said, I've got some recent questions, I want to be able to, I just knew that meant that I just didn't remember when, so, okay, very good, all right, I'll talk to you about offline, thanks.
Anything, anything else about the, about Brayz's information? Okay, again, I will ask, are there any communications from the board regarding agenda heads or anything in general? Hearing done, then let's move on to old business. Let it do the first and second motion to adopt the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar for the first day of school being Wednesday, August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. The last day of school being May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-six, city so moves and Steve seconds. Anything you want to mention?
Real quick, this is the same calendar that presented to the board last meeting, about matter study session, it is aligned with the county, kind of the high schools that attend GADC, just because we have to have a very summer schedule, otherwise our students miss out on opportunities there, so it aligns very closely to that, we worked with the union and that, appreciate their work, Mary Case Day especially, spent some time with me, we had a meeting last, had an opportunity for a meeting last week, it was last Friday, no, sorry, it was last Thursday morning, and we actually, just if you might have any questions or comments about it, they did come and ask, it was myself, Mr. Stone, and Mr. State, so, no, I had any questions, so we're happy to hear that, but we did have that meeting, and like I said, it's in line with the rest of the counties, and some surrounding districts.
Questions about that? Okay, roll call please, the other?
Thirty-five, yes, Steve Roden.
Yes.
Jeff Emerson. Danny Lehart.
Yes.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
And Miller.
Yes. And then first and second motion to approve the following mid-year graduate student numbers, two oh two five two oh two and two oh two five one fifty-eight. And this is something that we do every year. Dan so moves and Steve seconds, anything you want to mention there?
No, these are just a couple that we added to the list.
Okay, roll call please, the other?
Danny Lehart.
Yes.
Steve Roden.
Yes.
Jeff Emerson.
Yes.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Thirty-five, yes, Tim Miller.
Yes. Entertained first and second motion to approve the total base bid from Ellen's mentioned, which includes the base bid at one, in the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. Alternate one in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars, and alternate two in the amount of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, at a cost of five hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars, as presented. at a cost of five hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars as presented and to reject all other bids. How Sean so moves and Dan seconds. Mr. Smith?
I'd just like, just a correction on the base bid amount, it's three hundred and six thousand dollars, five hundred and four.
Okay.
About three sixty, so just, that's clear, the total is five hundred and eleven.
So it's it's just, it's tight draw.
Yeah, three hundred and sixty.
Okay, good, all right.
At least that's what I heard, so.
Yeah, okay.
Just to clarify that. Um, we had three bidders on this uh project. This is for um, we had a company come in, remember, and evaluated the condition of the insulation in the roof to see what percentage of the roof we needed to. Um, the project that actually spun up and went out as a result of those findings, um only identifies three areas of the roof to be addressed. And that's good news. Instead of the whole thing having to be done, we can just attend to the uh these three primary areas. So we'll certainly entertain any other questions that the board might have.
I was interested in the difference between the top and the bottom. Natural prices of.
So the the, if you look at the bid tab, the highest bidder was probably closer to eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And then there was one that kind of split the difference between the two, and so for five hundred and eleven thousand dollars, um this did come in under estimates, so that's good.
Any other questions about about this adjacent? Okay, roll call please, Alanda.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Danny Lehart.
Yes.
Jeff Emerson.
Yes.
Cindy Klein, yes, Steve Rogers.
Yes.
And Mel.
Yes. Under data first and second motion to approve the administration's recommendation to increase social studies graduation requirements to two point five credits for the class of two thousand and twenty-one. Cindy moves and Dan seconds. Spencer?
So there's uh similar information that I presented to the board last week uh that we were approached about adding uh credit. Well, it's actually approached by full credit, being in the middle to half a credit for social studies for the class of, which would be the incoming eighth graders. Uh this puts us in line with pretty much everybody in the conference, as well as the surrounding areas. Also uh helps our students to get meet the requirements to to most elementary helpers. Uh so it's something that is the best for our kids and it's what we're here for, and uh so yeah, so we're going to vote with that.
Roll call please, Alanda.
Cindy Klein, yes, Danny Lehart.
Yes.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Steve Rogers.
Yes.
Will let it first and second motion to authorize the administration to move forward with the planning and execution of repairs at the total end of the school and then to reoccupy. How we gone so moves? Dan seconds?
Yeah, again, um this has to do with our intermediate school. Last week, we just discussed the town homies that we had. The from those, from some of our feedback and just the conversation looked different, we feel like moving forward with fixing the roof and fixing that wall, um keeping everything how it is might be the best interest of of the district. Uh I feel, I still think it's best interest that we get a committee together and start looking towards the future. Uh this this puts us in line with what we had, the board had set up already where, once we had a new dressing agreement, look at what we're gonna do with the area. Um this delays that, but um this also puts us in a spot where we can take care of that roof and then and that wall. And get our people in as quick as possible. Uh we believe in twelve months to get what's his.
Any?
Yeah, let's go like real, real quick, um first of all, thanks, Chris, um and the committees and doing the town halls. Um I've listened to a lot of the things, I've listened to people come in. Um one of the things I just, I really, I struggle with and I'll get to that point here in a second, but um you know, Cole City is built, people come to Cole City for the schools.
Right.
Um, I have a very hard time with the numbers that are gonna be thrown out to fix a hundred year old building. I know we have plans in the future to build a school. We need to accelerate that we, the time is now. If there's, I and I respect the fact that there's a lot of history in that building. Um, I also respect the fact that, you know, there are people on fixed incomes, I get all of that. Um, one of the things I would like to stress, I I don't have any kids that go to school, I don't have any grandkids, so it's not a decision based on that. It's just, I find it hard to believe, and as you, the longer you wait, the longer that it's gonna cost to build a new school. To put millions of dollars into a a building that is a hundred years old, that we pay our architects to say that, yeah, you could fix this, but that's not saying, okay, now the next problem's gonna happen, then the next problem. So it could start off at a number, whatever they come back with, but folks, anybody that's built the house or rehab or done anything.
They normally go out as a righties.
You 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 really are. It that that cost is gonna keep increasing. Um, and I just can't, I can't vote to to put money into a hundred year old school. Um currently now, I think the time is now for us, Cole City needs a school. Because not only does that school need work, um the grade school also needs a lot of work. And and folks, just anybody that's listening, this is something that I've always struggled with throughout the years when when I was on the board for twelve years, when we would put a lot of capital money into that building because um this day was coming. And it's hard, it's hard for community. We have a lot of community members that went to school there. It's hard, I get it, but the time is now, Cole City needs a new school.
Good, thank you, Jeff. Anybody else? Anything you want to mention? Okay, roll call then, Alanda. Oh, I'm sorry, do you, Kristen?
Oh, yes, yep, I'm good, thank you.
Jason, anything?
No.
Okay, roll call please, Alanda.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Danny Lehart.
Yes.
Jeff Emerson.
No.
Cindy Klein, yes, Steve Rogers.
Yes.
And Mel.
Yes.
Well said, Jeff, by the way.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff, thank you.
Well said, sir. Yeah, I think a lot of people agree with you too. Well said.
Okay, I'll entertain a first and second motion to approve authorizing the administration to move forward and requesting bids for the renovation of the elementary school for the twenty-five, twenty-six school in year. How move? John so moves, you have second. Dan seconds?
Yeah, just, this is, um so we get the building up and make it a little bit better for our kids as where they're in our staff. Um doing some renovations, electrical work, um you know, last week talking about a million dollars worth of upgrades to help prepare the the ES for the next year or two. Um some electrical capacity and infrastructure to make HVAC. Uh we're still in the process of looking at modular classrooms as as a possible option. Um and we'll have more information here soon on that, I believe, but those are some things that need to get done. Um so we're just looking to move forward with those and and bids out for those if necessary. Um Mr. Smith, you have any to add?
So I did meet with um our architect group this week as we began having the preliminary discussions. Um we think that the estimates that we had initially um were were high because there're gonna be some significant challenges. To one point, as Mr. Emerson point uh addressed, is putting capital money into a facility that also may have uh a short lifespan. Um, that said, some of the logistical problems that uh that face us, given the timeframes, one, for example, being the switchgear, um for us to increase the electrical capacity in that facility significantly, uh we would need to add a switchgear to that building. Um that is a a very expensive piece of equipment and it is a year lead time. And um so at this point, my direction to them as we're deciding what projects are coming next to come out for bid is to um is to is to pivot and radically change what that approach, the solution is gonna look like. So it'll be, it'll be far less in terms of a budgetary uh commitment by the board than we had originally anticipated. And quite honestly, I would say that as we continue to move down this road, those will continue to get lower and lower and we will be able to um to still accommodate students in an environment that's safe um without spending um without spending money that that the board doesn't need to. So I just wanted to add that piece because that was a fresh meeting that happened yesterday, so, but I appreciate the thing.
Thank you, Jay. Any other questions about that? Roll call please, Alanda.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Danny Lehart.
Yes.
Jeff Emerson.
Yes.
Cindy Klein, yes, Steve Rogers.
Yes.
And Mel.
Yes. We got to do business then. I will entertain a first, second motion to approve paying the invoice for the payment of fifty-five thousand, five hundred eighty dollars and the sharing at the intermediate school in the amount of a hundred and forty-one thousand, ninety-nine dollars as presented. How Sean so moves and seconds. Jason, yeah, go ahead, Jay.
So because we filed an insurance claim for this and we have extensive projected conversations to get them to cover these pieces, um and this was done under the emergency kind of um section of the statute that allows us to forego bidding in order to get the the space stabilized. Um, as a result of that, the board has to individually approve the paying of the invoices as a function of that, so that's what this is here right now. Um I have submitted all these invoices and um the communications that they've required, and so I anticipate reimbursement to happen here in the next thirty days um for this amount of money. Further, um we are investigating whether the uh the appeals process that comes along with the insurance group that we are working with would allow us to make an argument once again for um a bigger commitment from insurance to cover the cost of repairs. We think that that is probably the next logical vector for us is to make a formal appeal back to underwriting. Um it, we may not succeed because that's how insurance companies work. Um but we are gonna investigate that um that process, so we'll have more to update once we're there and submit that and and give the board the feedback from our carrier, so thank you.
Mr. Smith, okay, roll call please, Alanda.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Danny Lehart.
Yes.
Jeff Emerson.
Yes.
Cindy Klein.
And Steve Rogers.
Yes.
And Mel.
Yes. Senator, first and second motion to approve the filing of the quarterly draft report for the regional office of education for the quarter ending December twentieth, two thousand and four. How move? John so moves and Cindy seconds. This is something we do every year, so it's just a formality. Any, any quick, uh go ahead then, roll call Alanda, please.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Cindy Klein, yes, Jeff Emerson.
Yes.
Danny Lehart.
Yes.
Cindy, sorry, Steve Rogers.
Yes.
And Mel.
Yes. The data first and second motion to approve the resolution authorizing intervention in proceedings before the Grundy County Board of Review, Will County Board of Review and the State of Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board in to waive the reading of the resolution. Uh we gone so moves and Dan seconds, go ahead.
Yeah, just real quick, this, we talked a little about this when uh he was here. Uh this just allows for those lower level tax appeals, appeals for me to go to the board and take care of that, rather than just have to spend the time with legal. Um it's, it'd be the minor things, we're we're chasing on this, so. All this.
Yeah, so this is a procedure we have to go through. Alanda, a roll call please, Alanda.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Danny Lehart.
Yes.
Jeff Emerson.
Yes.
Cindy Klein, yes, Steve Rogers.
Yes.
And Mel.
Yes. Entertained a first and second motion to approve the new teacher base salary as presented. How move? John so moves, Steve seconds. Anything?
Just uh just quick review, uh as in the last negotiations and union gave this to the board to set each year. Uh they were applying with that and uh this is a small increase from last year, but um forty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty still puts us in a spot where we're as starting salary, we're still up there in the middle pack, maybe upper middle. In our area, we we have had issues getting getting staff hired, I mean, those areas are very common, so uh I think it's a good number for us to get.
Questions, board members? Roll call please, Alanda.
Mommy Hamilton.
Yes.
Steve Rogers.
Yes.
Jeff Emerson.
Yes.
Danny Lehart.
Yes.
Cindy Klein, yes, and Mel.
Yes. Our data first and second motion to approve the administrative guidelines for the respiratory protection program as presented. Cindy so moves, Dan seconds, Jayce?
So Mr. Wickheiser, who is our head of um building the grounds, um has been attending several conferences as he, as he begins taking over a lot of the duties that formerly I would have done. Um, one of the things that uh he recently learned, there's many of the chemicals that we learn that we use um day to day require a PPE that is um a full respirator. And we obviously provide that equipment for our employees. Sometimes they don't always use them as appropriate. What this policy does is it essentially gives me a stick to point with and say, no, if the MSD sheet says that PPE is required, you have, these are the guidelines that you're gonna follow to use them, and we're gonna pull the, all the groups that this applies to and pull them in, review the policy with them, we'll train them once again. Because obviously, we want to keep the people that work for our organization safe when they're utilizing uh chemicals. Um and sometimes um for their own good, we put policy in place and reinforce it with them, so that's what this is about, um but I entertain any questions.
Do you have like respiratory fit testing? You do fit testing with them?
So we, when, usually when we introduce the PPE to them, we go through and do that, yeah, but that.
How do you do it?
So it is not as formal a process as I want, and I've had that conversation with our, when we have our insurance visits each year, that's an item on one of our lists to make sure um that, you know, things like ladder training and stuff. So we're hoping to 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 tighten that up as well if we're gonna force them to comply uh with the guidelines.
You have a procedure for for PP, like for that, for, okay, like like clean shave and all that, they're all aware of all that to have a good fit and all that. You're talking my language.
No, I know.
You're right.
I know, and like I, and like I said. And like I said, and like I said, the the, this gives us the opportunity to come in and and give them that training to make sure that everybody knows what the expectations are, as well as how to use not only the equipment properly, fits, et cetera, but when to use the equipment. Because I shouldn't be the one who comes in and says you should have your respirator on.
And that's good, because putting it all in place, because you can have it on you, but if you're not doing it right, you're correct. You've completed exactly what.
Yeah.
You're not supposed to, so.
Yeah, cause boring wins, if you didn't know that.
Good stuff.
Boring wins, so thanks.
Anything else, Jerry?
No.
Any questions, any other board questions? Okay, let's go roll call Alanda with that, please. Who, who, who's the motion?
I don't know, we can do it again.
Let's do it again.
It's too, Jeff, here. I, 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 I distracted. I want Jeff to the motion, right?
All right, Jeff, you wanna make the motion?
Yeah, sure.
All right, Dan seconds, okay, here we go. Roll call, Alanda.
Jeff Emerson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Cindy Klein, yes, Steve Rogers.
Yes.
Yes. Entertained a first and second motion to approve the substitute teacher rate for pay of a hundred and fifty dollars per day starting in FY twenty-six full year.
How move?
Council moves and seconds.
So we were a hundred and twenty-five this year, happened for a couple of years now, moved to a hundred and fifty dollars a day. Uh keeps us, we've collected information from around surrounding districts, this keeps us competitive. Finding substitutes is a fun process, just ask Mr. Smith, or we have our principals in the mornings. Um as they're trying to scramble and put people in places when needed, uh some days are worse than others, but this helps us keep, stay competitive and keep us, keep our substitutes up.
Any questions, board members? Can you roll call please, Alanda?
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Danny Lehart.
Yes.
Jeff Emerson.
Yes.
Cindy Klein, yes, Steve Rogers.
Yes.
And Mel.
Yes. Entertained a first and second motion to approve a two-year agreement with Morris Hospital for Athletic Training Services as presented. Cindy so moves and Steve seconds. Okay, anything you want to mention about that?
So uh for a lot of years, we have looked for athletic training services to come from different groups. Um, in the, in the last several years, we we utilize the group that used to be uh Resins Group. Um they've been absorbed by Morris Hospital. Um we've had, we've had really good, um some really good people as part of that that have helped our student athletes, have been here for practices, games, we appreciate them um very much. It was time to renew that contract. Um, this, this two-year agreement keeps us under the the bid threshold for formal bidding. Um and quite honestly, there's not, there's not a lot of other competition in the in the area. And so our recommendation would be to keep, uh stay consistent with um our Morris, our Morris group.
And I haven't kept up with that, I would be getting good service from that, Jay.
Absolutely. Um, it's really interesting, the last time we did this, we would get submissions from people who would say, yeah, we'd like to provide this service for you, but we don't have any athletic trainers.
Right.
And we can't guarantee you'll get the same trainer every day or that we can be there every day. And um Morris Hospital, the resin group said, no, you know what, we'll commit to giving you a pool and they may rotate through, but you'll know every one of them. Um and they've really done a good job servicing us. I know that Mr. Braise has been, and Mr. Hutchey before him was really uh happy with what their service provided and uh and we'd like to just continue that relationship.
And I can add to, we've actually, fortunately, we had a senior.
We, yeah, I mean.
Really?
Yeah.
I know for years we had one, you know, when I was coaching, we had one, and it's important that somebody's on site. I mean, that takes all the owners off the coaches and they don't have to worry about that. I remember years when we did that.
Yeah, I mean, like everything, there's always, there's always that opportunity there, but that being said, when something happens, cause you know, I mean, I got two athletes, it's Monica calls, is my point, you know what I'm saying? So, and she's at the games and all that stuff, so.
Her number's in my phone.
Yeah.
My kid has sort of returned the phone to me.
Yeah, so like I, like I said, everybody knows Monica, it's all right, work, nobody's bad.
And that's, and that's a great thing, I, yeah, I'm I'm so glad, like I said, that we have that, cause it takes all the owners off the coaches. Okay, uh roll call, Alanda, please.
Cindy Klein, yes, Steve Rogers.
Yes.
Jeff Emerson.
Yes.
Danny Lehart.
Yes.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
And Mel.
Yes. Any items not noted during the time or any communications from the board?
Yes, ready to close up, I just want to thank and welcome you guys again, thanks for coming, you guys are welcome, anytime, I know it's super exciting. Yeah, wake them up here.
At least everybody stayed away. At least everybody stayed away, that's a good thing.
No, you guys definitely are welcome, come anytime if you have any questions, so if we just stop there and ask, or you may call.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes, yeah, two seconds.
My name's Kevin Bott, most of you guys know me, I'm the scout master for Troop Two Six Six, these are my scouts in front. As part of a, a couple of different merit badges, actually, they need to participate, citizenship in the community, so they need to participate as part of a, a board like such as this. That's why they're here, it's also part of the communications merit badge. So these, these gentlemen here, that's why they, that's why they came to see a fun little meeting and realize that they never want to be on a board again. So I appreciate you allowing us to be here and our, our voice to learn something. Thank you.
Well, thank you, we're glad to have you, and you're welcome anytime, so if you want to come back sometime, come on back, no problem, all right? Okay, anything then regarding agenda items or anything in general? Then at seven oh one, I will entertain a first and second motion going to close session. For the purpose of considering information regarding the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, individual student issues, and administrative contracts. Steve so moves and Dan seconds. Roll call, please.
Steve Rogers.
Yes.
Danny Eagleheart.
Yes.
Jeff Emerson.
Yes.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Cindy Klein, yes.
Yes.